We can begin Chairman O'Malley.
Thank you McCartney and at this time, please call the roll McCartney.
In accordance with Tennessee code eight dash forty-four dash one oh eight, section C three, I have two questions to ask if you could answer for the record as I call the roll. Are you able to hear us clearly so that you can participate in this meeting? And please identify any persons present in the room with you. Trustee Atkins.
Here, I can hear you well, I'm in the room with Hannah Allen.
Thank you, trustee Kanata.
Here, I can hear you and I am in the room by myself.
Trustee Jenkins.
I can hear and I'm alone.
Trustee Hogan.
Yes, and I am alone.
Trustee Luck.
Yes, and I'm alone.
Trustee May.
Yes, and I'm alone.
Trustee McInnes.
Yes, I hear you and I'm alone.
Trustee Miller. Trustee O'Malley.
I can hear you and I'm alone as well.
Trustee Wadia.
You're alone and I can hear you fine.
Thank you.
Thank you McCartney, we have a quorum. Please note that there are items on our agendas that need to be adopted. I move for adoption of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that second secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yeah.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McInnes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you, the agenda is adopted. The minutes for the September eighteenth, twenty twenty board meeting. And the special called meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty were circulated in advance. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McInnes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you, the minutes are approved. At this time, I'd like to recognize interim president, Danelle Whiteside, who will introduce today's campus spotlight. Danelle.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm really excited about the spotlight today, I know we have spent the last couple of meetings talking a lot about COVID. COVID will be mentioned today as well, but I'm tired of talking about COVID. So I thought for this spotlight, we could talk about some exciting capital projects that have been opened recently or that will open or are continuing. And so to speak about that, we have Mitch Robinson, our vice president for finance and administration. And Mark Brunner, who is with our design and construction and our chief architect to talk about some of those exciting developments. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Mitch.
Thank you, Danelle, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information with you about more specifically about how we fund our capital projects. Mark's got all of the good information that you're going to be seeing here in a minute. But just so you know, project funding is provided basically from five different sources here at the institution. First is state funding. And so, for example, when we get money for the new health professions building, that is provided by the state, most of it at least. We do have a match that we are required to make, but those are paid for with general obligation bonds for the most part. The second way that we finance projects here at Austin P is through debt. And that is typically through the Tennessee State School Bond Authority. And those are typically revenue bonds that we, they issue for us on our behalf. And the third way is sometimes we get grants. And one of the projects that Mark will be sharing with you soon was a grant funded project where the grant provided some money and also the university provided some money. The fourth option, and you'll see one of these as well, is gifts. We have a number of gifts that come to the institution. Those are restricted for various projects here at the institution. And the last and final way we fund project is with campus funds. Those are usually plant funds. And we have done a number of projects with plant funds, such as the main mathematics and computer science building was a hundred percent funded with campus funds. So just wanted to provide you an understanding of the different ways that these projects are funded. Mark will share with you the specific funding for those projects that he's going to be talking about. And I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Brunner at this point in time. Thank you.
Good morning, good morning, and thank you President Whiteside and trustee O'Malley for giving me the opportunity to introduce my department and share what we've accomplished last year and along with some future projects. I'm Mark Brunner, Director of Capital Planning, Design and Construction. I've been in this role since 2014 when we were still under the Tennessee Board of Regents. First, I'd like to recognize my staff who make all of these projects possible. Philip Zock is the project manager, he oversees the design, construction and closeout. He's in the trenches putting out fires, coordinating with stakeholders and clients and shouldering the day to day designing construction responsibilities. Kimberly Petrie is our project man or our budget manager. Kimberly oversees budgets, pay requests, designer and contractor solicitations, contract processing and budget closeouts. And Yulene King keeps us all on task and she also keeps the space inventory. Our office oversees all construction projects costing more than a hundred thousand dollars and all projects utilizing designers. We lead the master plans, studies and project programming and estimating. We work closely with the physical plant to identify maintenance priorities for state funded maintenance submittals and with academic departments for outlay submittals. We coordinate with the Tennessee Higher Education Commission Facilities Office and the State Building Commission. And we also maintain the space inventory and annual facilities insurance reports to the state. The first projects we'll look at this morning are those that have been completed on College Street. They've been created with plant funds and gift funds. But first, let me talk a little bit about the Jenkins and Win properties. In 2016, we were able to acquire about seven acres from the Jenkins and Win auto dealership, which allowed us to reach across College Street. As you will see, these properties are critical for APSU strategic growth. There are a total of six buildings. Honda is the executive classroom building where you normally meet for these meetings and also storage for the grasslands initiative. The Jenkins building houses university advancement. The Anros bookstore, which we'll be looking at in just a few minutes, was the Ford dealership. The truck center houses equity access and inclusion. And the newly renovated Newton Center was the Lincoln Mercury dealership. And underneath the Newton Center and equity access and inclusion is a large service bay that we're using for central stores, custodial offices and storage for Rex sports. And in the red there, the remaining areas, there's parking for about 600 vehicles. The first project we'll look at, it's the Anros bookstore, which was paid for by plant funds. This project relocates the bookstore from the Catherine Harvo building in the upper right hand corner on the slide to the new location at the corner of College and Fourth. This project included a 10,000 square foot complete renovation for the bookstore. And the Catherine Harvard building will eventually be slated to be used for an expanded food venue. The new location offers a cafe with outdoor seating, trade books, supplies and clothing, textbook area and online sales pickup. And the space at the top of the drawing, which I'll cover later in this presentation, is shell space and a lobby with stairs and an elevator for access to the second floor. I've got some before and after, before, during and after shots. This is what the exterior of the property looked like when we purchased it in 2016. And here's some before shots. It's the showroom and the and the service bay. And here are some construction photos during construction. We demolished everything except two load bearing walls, so it was a complete gut. And here are some after photos. And here's before and after shot. Taken from the same angle, you can see that we added windows to the second floor. And also, also the city installed a much appreciated pedestrian crossing at the intersection of College Home and Fourth, making getting across College Street much safer than it was before. The next project is the Newton Center, which was finished in October and was funded with a generous gift from Wilmer Newton to honor her parents. Newton relocates the existing military student center from the Morgan Center to College Street opposite Drain Street. The existing center and Dr. Norman mentioned this yesterday, the existing center was 750 square feet. The new one is over 5,000 square feet, so it's a huge improvement for their needs. The renovation sold seven offices, a lounge, computer lab, a spacious lobby and a conference room. Patrons will be able to register for classes, receive academic counseling and other support services specifically tailored to veterans and their dependents. And again, I've got some before and after shots, before, during and after. Standard showroom with offices on the east and south. And here it is during construction, again, it was a complete gut. We also put new storefront windows in. And here's the finished lobby and reception. The goal was to create an open, welcoming and relaxed atmosphere. I think we've done that. And here's the lounge and computer lab. I expect the building will be heavily used. The next slides are future projects that will start when university funds become available. As I mentioned, we got at the second floor of the Anros bookstore for future construction of office spaces. The second floor will be accessed off of the new lobby, which is just next to Fourth Street. As part of the renovation, we built out a portion of the shell, we will build out a portion of the shell space for a conference room also. The, this slide shows an open space, which how it exists right now, 5,800 square feet. And the stair and elevator shown and highlighted red. And here's the, here's the space as it exists now. It's a panoramic view into campus along college streets. And the west will have, the west view will be able to see the welcome center and the impact. I'll discuss both of those here shortly. The photos don't do this space justice, though. It really is, it's probably the best space on campus, so whoever gets this will be very fortunate. The last College Street project we'll be looking at today is the Welcome Center. Again, this will be built when plant funds are available. The Welcome Center will be located in the executive classroom building with inside of the impact and the impact is shown in the shaded green block there. Will create a highly, this is conceptual, but it's will be a highly visible inviting location for prospective students. This will be a one stop shop where visitors can pick up recruitment material, assemble for campus tours, drop off applications, deliver transcripts, schedule appointments with academic advisors and register for classes. The center will have three to five full time staff members and up to 10 student ambassadors. There are two concepts, both have tiered seating, lounges, soft seating and reception, workstations, staff offices and computer stations for students who enroll in classes and apply for admissions. The space fills the front lobby of the executive classroom, as you can see. The next slides are a sampling of other projects recently completed and paid for with plant, gift and grant funds. The first of these is the Hayes House Restoration. A note on the name, the university purchased the house from the Hayes family in 2017, but it was built in 1859 by Alfred Robb. And you'll see it referred to as the Robb House on the Federal Registry of Historic Places. The building sits on two acres between Robb Avenue and York Street. And you can see its proximity to the Dunn Center here. It's a two story building with 7,300 square feet. And it was added to the National Registry in 2000. We recently finished replacing all the exterior mortar and repaired deteriorated masonry. We've installed HVAC, new electrical service, renovated restroom to make it ADA accessible. And the next phase will be to complete repairs to the exterior envelope. Initially, we plan to use, use the location for small receptions and events and possibly to eventually use it as a president's residence. Due to its relative privacy and acreage, it may be a better location for the president's residence in Archwood. The next two projects were paid for by two generous gifts. The first one is the Jenkins Family Field House. We converted an indoor tennis center facility to a multi-sport practice facility and installed 27,000 square feet of artificial turf. It's being used by all the sports, I'm told. Gets them out of the weather. The next project is the Downey Baseball Operations Center and Clubhouse. Like the Newton Center, this represents a significant enhancement to student program. With this renovation, baseball went from a 1,700 square foot facility to a 5,700 square foot facility. It's a huge improvement. We tore down 2,200 square feet of the building. And you'll see in the slide in just a second, there was a significant crack in it that we were glad to get rid of. The new facility has a player lounge, locker room, showers, restrooms and a coaches suite. There's also a 900 square foot shell space that eventually will be finished out as a classroom. And the last two images are the two shaded areas is a comparison between what they had, if you go back just a second. The lower right hand corner is the old facility and the red is the new facility. So you can see the significant difference. Um, the, it was an 18,000 square foot warehouse built in 1966 and we were using it for surplus materials and ground equipment storage. And you can see the crack there in the wall. And here's some photos during construction. And there's the finished product. There's no indication that the building was ever a warehouse. And we also installed a masonry on the west end and the south side to better fit in with the campus architecture. The next project is the Greenway Extension. This was paid for by a grant from the Clarksville Montgomery County Community Health Foundation and Sustainable Campus Fees. The trail starts at the corner of Robb and Ferris, which is northwest of the baseball outfield and winds through a wooded area behind Emerald Hills. It runs in front of Pace Alumni and eventually lets out north of Emerald Hills at Craft Street. It'll eventually connect to the city's trail and the city is planning on building a bridge across Red River to eventually complete a six mile trail. And you can see in ours, in the slide there on the, on your monitors, the red dash line there is, is the, is our trail. It's a, this is a section in front of Pace Alumni. And the trail is three quarters mile long, 10 feet wide, all paved. It's a good way to get your 10,000 steps in. Next, we'll briefly look at state funded maintenance projects. State funding of both outlay and maintenance is, Mitch already mentioned, is critical for many projects. State funding for maintenance is based on an allocation to APSU from a $150 million maintenance pool. APSU gets a little bit more than 3% from that pool, which comes to about 4.6 million dollars annually. Ordinarily, the state's unable to give us the full amount, as you can see in the numbers on the slide. However, Tennessee is one of the more generous states in the country when it comes to funding capital maintenance. And our submittal for 2021 is the Sunquist Roof and Ventilation Controls. We have two outlay projects in the hopper. Both are paid for by state dollars and a local match, local matching gift funds and plant funds. The first one that I think everyone, most everybody has seen before is the Health Professions Building. This building will house the School of Nursing, Social Work, Psychological Counseling, Health and Human Performance and Allied Health Sciences. There will also be an audiology and counseling and social work clinics in the building. THEC ranked it number two in their priorities, so we're hoping that it will be funded in this coming fiscal year. The total cost of the project is 70,175,000 dollars. The building site is near other STEM buildings, the Sunquist Science Center, Technology Building and the main mathematics building. The, the images you'll see in the next slides are very conceptual. There are a few baked in design ideas that will hopefully translate into the ultimate design and the building. But the building could look very much different than the concepts you're going to see. The design is expected to have three floors, an eighth street facing, north, south orientation, two entrances, one off of Eighth and Marion and the other opposite Jackson Alley. The building materials will be brick, glass and metal panels. And there will be onsite parking for about 85 cars. It'll be over 114,000 square feet. And the project includes renovation of about 14,000 square feet of vacated space in Clement, Accord, Dunn and Sunquist. And those spaces will primarily be converted to active learning classrooms. And these are two more images, the bottom one is from Art and Design Building, the top one is from Music Mass Comm. Again, these are very conceptual. The next outlay request, which I don't believe you've seen yet, is the Woodward Library renovation in addition. This, this request for expansion goes all the way back to 1976 when the master plan of that year identified the need for additional 30,000 square feet. And the request also combines the 2013 master plan, which identified the need for a student resource center. The project will combine the library with tutoring, success coaching, advising, testing, writing and reading centers, classrooms for collaborative learning spaces. These programs are currently housed in eight different buildings, so this will be a way to consolidate all of these into one space. It will have three floors corresponding to the library with the main connection between the two structures being the main entry level, which is the middle image. And here are a couple of concepts, a single and a two story addition atrium that will be on the west side of the library. The lower right hand corner shows, the lower left hand corner shows the existing. Both concepts envision a masonry skin on the building, which will help, help it match the campus better. The project budget, including all of the enabling projects, is 60,500,000 dollars. Mitch mentioned that one of the ways we pay for projects is through debt and borrowed funds. And this is the fifth type of funding that we'll look at. Currently, we have no projects, however, that are being paid for with borrowed funds. But we are paying debt on building, on the four buildings shown, along with the Fort Campbell Classroom Building, Emerald Hill, Oregon University Center and Hand Village. The last project we'll look at is the multi-purpose event center or the Impact. This is a 30 year lease with Montgomery County. It's a P4, which is a public-public-private partnership where the public to private part is between Montgomery County and the Nashville Predators. This is considered debt by the Tennessee State Board State Bond Authority. For some background on this, the 2013 master plan identified the need for a basketball practice court in the Dunn Center. Now, not long after the university entered into discussions with the county about leasing space in a county built facility. And after comparing the cost of building in addition to the Dunn Center, the university determined that it would be more cost effective to partner with the county. The agreement gives us unhindered access to a practice court, basketball offices, training room and locker rooms. Additionally, we are able to use the main arena for 26 basketball games per year. The lease is being paid with existing student athletic fees, revenue generated from ticket sales, premium seating, sponsorships and merchandise and concessions. You can see from the slide that the impact is located adjacent to campus. It's a 280,000 square foot facility being built at the cost of 105 million dollars. And the, the arena will seat about 5,500. And we have a dedicated 34,000 square feet for APSU basketball. According to city officials, it will open fall of 2022. If you're on campus, you can hear them hammering a foundation. All the basketball offices, training facilities and the practice courts will be located in the impact that will free up space for academic programs and other sports in the existing arena. On the slide is shown the men's and women's locker rooms, training and the practice court. The next slide shows the basketball offices. And here are some renderings from different angles. This is from First Street looking east. And the next one is from Second Street looking west. So more images, this is the concourse level and the entry lobby. And the dining and party suite. And the dedicated practice court and the main arena. Here's an image from mid-November. They're building the foundation, so they're at work over there now. The last slide is a, it shows a side benefit of the impact. And we're expecting it to be a real catalyst for the local economy. This is a conceptual rendering of a 50 million dollar private mixed use development that is being built, that is being planned to be built adjacent to the new arena. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and I'll take any questions you may have.
Mark, this is Mike, I'll, I'll kick it off. First of all, let me just say, wow. You know, I'm reminded of how much has been done on campus in recent years. And so first of all, let me say thanks to Danelle for bringing you and Mitch in front of us. Cause boy, what a retrospective of how the campus has changed, really even in the last five years. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to our colleague Don and Sandy Jenkins for, for their generosity on, on many fronts, as well as the other donors that are involved. I, I think it looks fabulous, your presentation was great and, and how exciting to, to be a GOV, especially to be a GOV. I, I think about, you know, a kid that's, you know, maybe a freshman or sophomore in high school and, and a good basketball player. And how exciting that might be to come here and play an arena like that. So thank you very much, I'd open up to my fellow trustees for other comments or questions.
Hi, Mr. Brunner, this is Kiri McInnes. Could you share who is the architect on the Woodward Library as well as the other project that's going to be in process? I know that RFPs go out, but the Woodward Library, for example, is such a wonderful transformation as well. And so, could share on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, it would be, it'd be wonderful now. We, we have not even submitted the Woodward Library yet, that's going to be submitted this fiscal year in July. After you review it, it'll be officially submitted to you first. The, the architect who just did the conceptual renderings was Barbara McMurray out of Knoxville. There is, there's, this could be a few years off. I mean, I'm anticipating this is going to take quite a while before we can get this, especially if we get the Health Professions Building. So it was Barbara McMurray and we would do an RFQ for the official design of it, it could be someone else. But it gives us, it gets the imagination flowing when you see these renderings. So, and I, I don't think there's a whole lot we could do with the atrium that you're seeing there and that, that you saw that would be much different. So that would probably be very close to what we would get. that would be much different. So that would probably be very close to what we would get. I can't see that, what we would get. We even know what that's going to look like on the north side. The Health Professions Building, that rendering was actually done in-house by Philip Zock. So he did a very good job with that.
I might add.
This is Don Jenkins. I, I think it's absolutely incredible what you've done with the Jenkins and Win property. Makes me very proud. When I saw your tearing the guts out of those buildings, it reminded me when the tornado went through there in nineteen ninety-nine. And it did thirteen million dollars worth of damage to Austin Peay, the, the Military Center. Most of the roof of the Presbyterian Church was on top of the militaries, where the Military Center is. And to see what you had done with that property is, is incredible. I know I, I'd been on the last three President's Circle of Advisors, and I always said that we needed property and we needed money, and and I am so pleased with the way that property's developed. Congratulations.
All those buildings have good bones, so when buildings have good bones, they're easy to repair. So thank you.
Mitch, did you have a comment?
The only thing I was going to add was Trustee McGinnis was the architect on the Health Professions Building. There is a very structured process that we have to go through as far as selecting the architect, and that process is not started yet. We actually had a meeting with the State Architects Office last spring when we thought we were going to get the project, and she was actually, came on campus and met with us to lead us through that process, but we never did get to the funding part of it. So hopefully this spring we'll start that all again, and then we'll be able to get an architect selected and assigned to it. And if everything goes according to plan, which typically does not, but if it does, we'll have an architect assigned to the project probably July, August, and we'll be able to kick them off and start the design. Design will probably take at least a year, so you're talking about the fall of, of the twenty-two, I guess that is, twenty-two. You, construction will probably take be about two, three months later, and eighteen months, so you can add it up. I think we're talking about the fall of, what was that, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, before that building went open.
Probably, probably a spring opening, twenty-five.
Yeah. So that, that's what you could expect.
Well, thank you. As you know, I was a student at Austin Peay thirty years ago, so when I come back to campus, I'm going to need a grid and a map where everything is. After COVID, it all gets done. I'm sure my fellow trustees may need one, too. It's changed so much.
Anybody else? Well, Mark and Mitch, thank you very much. What a terrific report. And Donnell, again, thank you for, I know COVID's very important, but thank you for the break from COVID, and that was a terrific report. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like, now I'd like to recognize Trustee May, member of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday. Valencia?
You're muted, Dr. May.
Dr. May, can you hear us? We still can't hear you. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm going to have to.
Valencia, are you on a phone or on just a computer?
I've had to switch to my phone.
Oh.
So now you have to turn your computer audio off.
I don't have my technical support here.
Just on your keyboard, can you turn your volume on your computer down all the way?
And on your computer?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Great. I don't know what happened. It just totally kicked me off on the computer, so I apologize for that. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. Trustee Miller presided over the meeting yesterday and is unavailable today. The committee reviewed and approved the following action item, which is on the agenda for your approval today. The approval of Master of Science and Criminal Justice with optional concentration and Homeland Security. Provost Maria Cronly presented two information items related to the Fall Census Enrollment and the outcome of the SAC COC fifth term, fifth-year interim report and QEP IMPACT report. That concludes my report, and I move that the board approve the minutes of the December third Academic Affairs Committee as written.
So move.
Second.
So thank you, Trustee May, and thank you for the move. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you, Secretary. The minutes are approved. Trustee May's report also contained an action item that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee May, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. You have before you a copy of the proposed Master of Science and Criminal Justice with optional concentration in Homeland Security. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the proposed Master of Science and Criminal Justice with optional concentration in Homeland Security.
Because it's a motion of the committee, we don't need a second. You've heard the motion on the approval of the Master of Science and Criminal Justice with an optional concentration in Homeland Security. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the Master of Science and Criminal Justice with an optional concentration in Homeland Security, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia. Trustee Wadia. Seven yeses.
Yes, yes.
Eight yeses.
Sorry, I was muted there.
Thank you. The motion carries. And I might just add, even though there's not been discussion at the board meeting today, there was a lot of discussion yesterday, and a lot of enthusiasm and support for this new Master of Science, especially with the concentration in Homeland Security and the potential impact that it may have for soldiers and, you know, coming out of Fort Campbell in particular. So, thank you. Thank you, Trustee May. I now like to recognize Trustee Jenkins, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us a report of the committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee did not review any action items. The committee reviewed the following information items related to Military Family Resource Center COVID-nineteen procedures. That concludes my report. I move that the board approve the minutes of the December third Student Affairs Committee as written.
Thank you, Trustee Jenkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Student Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Now, I'd like to recognize Trustee Kanata, Chair of the Audit Committee, to give us a report of the committee meeting yesterday.
Yes, thank you. I'm honored to present our Audit Committee meeting yesterday. The Audit Committee listened to several presentations from Blaine Clements regarding three items. The first was the internal audit reports released between August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, and November ninth, twenty-twenty, along with a list of outstanding audit recommendations. Second, we listened to the Controller Office's performance audit. And third, we were informed of the Information Technology Security update by David Sanchez, Associate Vice President and Chief Information Officer, hope I got, I got that right. Chief Information Officer. He gave us a great presentation. This concludes my report, and I move that we approve the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting held December third, twenty-twenty, as written.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Audit Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yep.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. Now, I'd like to recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee reviewed the action item titled "Consideration of the October Revised Budget for Fiscal Year 2020 and 2021." The committee also reviewed three information items. The twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two THEC of State Appropriations Distribution Recommendation, and B, the twenty-one, twenty-two THEC Capital Outlay and Capital Maintenance Projects, and the twenty-one, twenty-two THEC Tuition and Fee Recommendation. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and I move that the board approve the minutes of the December third Business and Finance Committee as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Trustee Atkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you. You have before you a copy of the October Revised Budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one. And by direction of the committee, I move to approve the October Revised Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one as written.
Thank you, Trustee Atkins. Because it is a motion of the committee, we don't need a second. You have heard the motion on the approval of the October Revised Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the October Revised Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The motion carries. And thank you for the opportunity now to present my report from yesterday's Executive Committee meeting. The committee reviewed the board of trustees' self-evaluation results. The committee also reviewed the Presidential Base Compensation, Performance Evaluation, and Incentive Plan. That concludes my report. I move that the board approve the minutes of the December third Executive Committee as written. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that, that we adopt the minutes of the Executive Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Executive Committee. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, we did that. The minutes are approved. Yesterday, the Executive Committee discussed the Presidential Base Compensation, the Performance Evaluation, and Incentive Plan for the current fiscal year. The committee is recommending to change the Presidential Base Compensation, Performance Evaluation, and Incentive Plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one by setting the Presidential Base Compensation range to be three-hundred-and-twenty thousand to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I move that the board approve the change to the Presidential Base Compensation, Performance Evaluation, and Incentive Plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one by setting the Presidential Base Compensation range to three-hundred-and-twenty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the approval of changing the Presidential Base Compensation, Performance Evaluation, and Incentive Plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one by setting the Presidential Base Compensation range to be three-hundred-and-twenty thousand to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The motion carries. We are being asked now to approve the naming request for the Sean Kelly K Club. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant General Ron Bailey, Vice President for External Affairs, to provide information on the naming request. General?
Good morning. Chairman O'Malley, according to Austin Peay State University Policy, seven-zero-zero-nine, a campus committee recommended and submitted a request that the board of trustees approve the naming of the Sean Kelly K Club Meeting and Club Room in the Downey Building on Austin Peay State University Campus located on Drain Street. The Sean Kelly K Club will be used by the entire baseball program to have team meetings, provide additional meeting space, and an attraction for recruits. This space will also be converted into a club area during baseball games, in which fans, parents, and donors will all have the opportunity to use. It can also be used for other athletics and alumni events on campus. Chairman O'Malley, that concludes my brief.
Thank you, General Bailey. You've heard the explanation from General Bailey. Is there a motion to approve the naming of the Sean Kelly K Club?
Motion.
Chairman, I would like to make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion, it has been moved, I'm sorry, and seconded that we approve the naming. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the approval of the naming of the Sean Kelly K Club. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee McKinnis. Trustee McKinnis.
Sorry. Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Wadia.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The motion carries. I'd now like to invite General, Lieutenant General Ron Bailey, Vice President for External Affairs, to provide us an update about the External Affairs Division. General?
Uh, good morning again. Chairman O'Malley and Board of Trustees, President Whiteside. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to present and talk about the awesome people of External Affairs. External Affairs is comprised of four major areas: Strategic Initiatives, which encompasses strategic planning, Public Relations and Marketing, which also oversees Printing Services and University Advancement, which also encompasses Alumni Relations. External Affairs also oversees APSU Foundation, which I'll cover in more detail later. In addition to myself, uh, I have an awesome team, starting with Chris Phillips, who serves as Assistant Vice President for University Advancement, Bill Persinger, who serves as Executive Director of the Public Relations and Marketing, Kathryn Bailey, who serves as our Research Analyst for Strategic Planning, and Diana Mohorsky, our Senior Administrative Assistant. And having mentioned Kathryn Bailey, I'm going to start with the Strategic Initiatives first. While the area is ultimately my responsibility, this plan wouldn't be possible without the hard work and dedication of Kathryn Bailey. This work is done in part with the Strategic Plan Scouting Team, who provide direction and counsel to myself and Kathryn, allowing us to develop and update a broad-based plan that provides roadmap for the university initiatives and goals. This plan helps the current and future administration stay the course, as well as provide a baseline that can be reassessed and modified as plans are implemented and goals are reached. Our next area is the Public Relations and Marketing Department. They tell the Austin P. story and promote the brand. How do we do that? You see more of our work than you probably realize. Public Relations and Marketing is a decision-making department who drives the brand and promotion of the university through advertising and media. They work primarily with Enrollment Management, Admission Office, to develop and deploy marketing, media, and advertising campaigns that support our recruiting goals. As part of External Affairs, they also support the efforts of University Advancement in developing support materials and creative content as well as media strategies. Additionally, the department provides the support to the Office of the President for Communication, Marketing, Media, and Crisis Communication Needs of the President. I'm going to break this down for you in more detail in the following slides, but wanted to give you a brief list of the major areas Public Relations and Marketing oversees. The department is comprised of 13 professional staff members with 169 years of collective service to the university. Charles Booth and Brian Dunn head up our Media Relations and Communications effort. They strategize and write the stories you see in media outlets, as well as build relationships with media constituents to ensure accuracy when covering stories and increases the success of our story reach. This team also developed much of our storytelling content for web and social media efforts. Additionally, they handle internal communications such as the Gov Says and our weekly student and faculty newsletters, Top Hat and Gov's at a glance. They write speeches, newsletters, and content for the president and administrators, as well as support emergency and crisis communication efforts. They have been instrumental in our COVID communications effort. During the last year, the department produced 378 stories, resulting in a potential reach of more than 221 million, according to our media reporting system. Potential reach is the number of times people may have viewed the stories based on subscription of each publication or site on which the story is published. Additionally, we saw a 71% growth in our website news section page views and wrote a record 378 news stories with seven going national. As of today, the department has produced more stories than last year, which was a record year for our department. Additionally, Internal Communications is a part of this, this area responsibility. Last year, the team spent 128 internal messages and, I'm sorry, sent 128 internal messages and saw increased click to open rate for 18, up to 18%. They also supplied 81 departments and areas with assistance for written content and edited 275 publications. This team, in collaboration with our Marketing Director Beth Lowry, oversees the university mobile app, P-Mobile. During the fiscal year, the app resulted in more than a million sessions by users and 74,000-plus period-to-period messages with a 77% question response rate. Our marketing efforts are headed by Beth Lowry. Her primary mission is to promote the university as a whole. Beth works closely with Enrollment Management and the admissions team to leverage the APSU brand through strategic advertising efforts. Beth also strategizes specialized campaigns such as new program launches, graduate campaigns, and promotion of the college as a whole. During the last fiscal year, our marketing team implemented 12 major campaigns. A few examples of these campaigns include the overall branding campaign, out-of-state recruitment AP Day, as well as programmatic campaigns for specific colleges. These campaigns resulted in more than 22 million-page digital impressions through Google, YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn. More than 50 publications and printed promotion items are produced each year, in-house to aid in recruitment efforts. During the fiscal year, we produced more than 350,000 pages of recruiting material, resulting in 9,863 applicants. And for the first time in university history, we surpassed 11,000 student enrollment mark. Taylor Siffco heads up our social media and photography efforts. If you've been on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, or TikTok, you have likely seen Taylor's work. In the last fiscal year, Taylor's work resulted in an cumulative of 107,000-plus followers on social media, producing more than 868,000-plus engagements. Social media isn't the only thing Taylor is focused on. She also heads up our photography and video efforts with the help of two student workers. Taylor and the students produce a phenomenal amount of work when considering they also strategize, deploy, and monitor our social media outlets. As you can see, they are an efficient and talented team. Over the last year, they fulfilled 352 projects, covered 147 events or news stories, producing 21-plus thousand digital assets, including production of 74 videos. Hannah Eden and Sean McCully head up our website and content management for the university's top pages of APSU.edu. The focus of our website is for recruitment, and Hannah and Sean's efforts are a critical component to maintaining that focus while also promoting APSU's brand. The web team's work resulted in more than 7.3 million-page views during the fiscal year and more than a million users, an increase of 12% over the prior year. Additionally, they saw more than 13% increase in new users. The web team has built more than 1,300 new pages, provided 22 campus training sessions of about 250-page-wide editing. They help maintain departmental site needs throughout the campus. I mentioned earlier that we produced more than 350,000 pages of individual publish, publications for recruiting. While this involves nearly every team member, it certainly wouldn't be possible without our talented team of designers, Kristen Miller, Rollo Welch, and David Johnson. They are the team of graphic designers who design our many publications, advertisements, and other print and digital assets, and help maintain the visual brand, the visual brand. As you can see, we have a lot of projects and deadlines to manage. Michelle Tyndall in our office handles project management, oversees the graphic designs, and the campus print shop operations. Laurie Moore handles our business operations. Together, they manage more than 360 projects and publication, as well as a 650,000 budget that supports our mission recruitment and advertising process. Projects range from designing helicopter wraps, billboards, and promotional publications to designing interior and exterior graphics for buildings. They are key to ensuring our operations are successful in promoting Austin P. Jana Gilbert heads up our government print, our Gov Print operation. She and David Johnson serve the printing needs of the campus, including outsourcing of printed graphics and publications and outdoor signage and installations. During the fiscal year, Gov's print designed more than 230 print projects, produced over 660,000 print impressions, and fulfilled numerous outdoor signage and specialty print products for campus. Their work ranges from brochures, flyers, and large-format printing to design promotional items and display, as well as coordinating outsourced printing and mailing fulfillment. I can't talk about printing operations without mentioning our longest-tenured employee, who retired at the end of this year. Sue Butler served as our press operator for an impressive 34 years. Her hard work and dedication will be missed. Thank you, Sue. Now let's move to University Advancement. The mission of University Advancement is to build and maintain a donor base that will make a difference in the lives of students, faculty, and staff today and for the future. This enables the university to fulfill its educational mission by augmenting current budgets and building on the university's endowments. The University Advancement staff is here to help you support the university through a variety of ways to give, which include cash donations, annual gifts, estate planning, commodity gifts, equipment donations, donations of service, and company gift matching. A major component of the Advancement Office is Alumni Relations. The Alumni Relations team shown here serves as the building block for alumni engagement and alumni giving. The Advancement Office takes the role as the fundraiser, and the Alumni Relations takes the role as the friend raiser. Uh, thanks to Nikki, Tanya, Janie, and Lacey for doing an outstanding job in that effort. We have over 100,000 alumni worldwide. We're the front door of alumni and donors to make their way back to our campus and build relationships with our Austin P. Development Officers, Admin, and Faculty and Staff. The primary goal of Alumni Relations is to increase its total number of alumni engaged in annual alumni activities and initiatives that establish lifelong relationships with Austin P. As soon as a student graduates from APSU, we begin engagement. Whether it's through the National Alumni Association, alumni email newsletters, alumni magazines, emails, phone calls, social media, and so forth, our goal is to increase alumni giving to benefit student success. All of these efforts reflect the goals of the university's strategic plan. The Alumni Relations Office provides programs, services, and network opportunities that meet the needs and interests of a diverse group of alumni, future alumni and friends. Our top priority is to use these events as a bridge to bring alumni, donors, and APSU together. A few examples of bridge-building events include homecoming, alumni awards ceremonies, military scholarship dinners, 50-year reunion, the Camel Light Ball, athletic alumni reunions, university events such as ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking. In addition to Alumni Relations, there are several other components of University Advancement. Uh, the University Advancement Office that support the mission of the university and its fundraising efforts. This can't be accomplished without a talented and hard-working group of professionals. They're comprised of six areas, and the first of which is our development team: Vaughn Sendamont, Jordan Harmon, Brad Avery, and Jerika Swiger. Our stewardship and scholarship team, who coordinate and collaborate uh, with senior leaders and deans to ensure that scholarships are supporting their vision and mission for education. Kim Atkinson and Kelly Board lead that effort, and thank you for those outstanding work they do to help us across the board. And our gift processing, annual giving, and communications team, these are the people behind the great work done by the University Advancement Office. In the next slide, I'm going to share with you the results of these various advancement teams have produced over the last year. Matt, Larry, and Peyton, Angie, Ashley, and Sam are doing a tremendous job in ensuring that we, uh, raise our funds or raise the funds that we need, uh, to maintain the operation. Total giving, Austin P. received 11.3 million in gifts and pledges in the fiscal year, surpassing the 10.4 million raised in 2019, making this the third consecutive year that Austin P. has set a record for the second-highest giving year in university history. To date, we have raised $8 million for this year, actually 1 million ahead of where we were last year, or were last year. Giving for the year included the highest cash year in university history, with 7.3 million raised compared to five-year average of 6.1. This is the second consecutive year in which this has been achieved. Each year, Austin P. continues to experience an increase in donors and the number of charitable gifts made for student success. As you can see, by this breakdown, giving by division that was led by athletics with more than 2.7 million designated. Among the colleges and the College of STEM received the most gift designation with more than 1.7 million. Endowments are permanently restricted funds managed by the Austin P. State University Foundation. The amount of each scholarship award may vary and is determined based upon the value of the endowment and the foundation's spending plan. In 2020, University Advancement established 25 new endowments, increasing funds committed to new endowments by 126% compared to the year prior. This provided scholarships to more than 1,000 students with more than $1.9 million awarded. Austin P. State University student, faculty, and staff made many adjustments to conduct all classes online as a result of the new coronavirus pandemic. The pandemic has also caused many members of the APSU campus community to experience unique personal difficulties in their lives. In response to this need, the Gov's Give Back Campaign was, fund was created. This initiative is intended to provide urgent financial assistance for students, faculty, and staff who have suffered severe economic, medical, or similar hardship during COVID-19 and in other times of crisis. The Austin P. Foundation, the primary focus of the foundation is to assist Austin P. State University by providing funds for worthy purposes which are not sufficiently funded by other sources. Philanthropic gifts are needed to satisfy increased demands that have been placed on higher education in recent years. The Austin P. State University Foundation has the primary responsibility of searching for and securing private funds, which are vital to the university. Private financial support helps Austin P. fulfill its mission and realize its full potential. The foundation welcomes your gift, which are not only investments in quality education, but in quality of life. And now I want to close with this short video introducing our recently-launched comprehensive campaign, and thanks to a tremendous staff, uh, that has helped in making External Affairs an awesome organization.
For more than 90 years, Austin P. has been a source of pride for its many alumni, friends, faculty, and staff and students. Their love for this institution has helped us grow into an academic, cultural, and economic focal point for this region. Many individuals saw our potential, and their faith made that potential a reality. Now, on the cusp of our 100th anniversary, they've inspired us to dream big as well, and that's exactly what we're doing through Austin P.'s new comprehensive campaign. It's time to dream with us, to ask, what if we transform this beloved institution into one of the great universities of tomorrow? We've dreamt big before. What if we renovate the football stadium? What if we inspire students with a new art and design building? What if we offered more scholarships? We'll continue what if. The campaign for Austin P. begins today. The dreaming begins today. We hope you will join us in finding the answers.
Chairman O'Malley, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank President Whiteside for the outstanding support that she provided to External Affairs and, and the great support in pushing all of the initiatives that we had. In addition to that, I want to thank a tremendous team that I have working with me and Chris Philip, Bill Persinger, Kathryn Kanata, I mean, I'm sorry, Kathryn Bailey, uh, just thinking about Kathryn Kanata. See your name on the staff, but thank you anyway. And, uh, to Diana Mohorsky, uh, for, uh, making this all possible. Uh, with that, that concludes the, uh, External Affairs Brief.
Uh, General Bailey, uh, thank you, uh, for a terrific report. Uh, congratulations on the successes, especially on the fundraising side of things. What an impressive, uh, uh, resume for the last year or so, uh, for External Affairs. Uh, thank you for your leadership. Uh, the quality of the work that you and your team do is outstanding. Um, and thank you too for highlighting the many people that are, in, in too many cases, behind the scenes, doing great work. So, uh, what a terrific report. I'll open it up for my colleagues to ask any additional, uh, that might have comments or additional questions. And Kathryn, I didn't know you were, uh, moonlighting on the side.
I just have a comment. That was a great presentation. I really enjoyed, um, all the fantastic visuals, and you can tell how great your creative team is and your marketing team, so good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, General Bailey. Uh, at this time, I'd like to recognize President Whiteside to give her report, and also to report on any interim items. Danell?
Thank you, Chairman O'Malley. Good morning, everyone. First, I want to say thank you for all that you do for Austin P. As Blaine shared yesterday with the Audit Committee, we received good news from the Joint Oper- we received good news from the joint operation, the joint government operations of the general assembly that they will be recommending a six-year extension of the board of trustees to the general assembly in the spring. Chairman O'Malley and I went a couple of weeks ago to Nashville and presented before the committee and it went extremely well. I will say that all the other locally governed institutions also went through the same sunset hearing, but some did not receive as long of an extension as we did. So I really believe that that is a testament to your dedication and also to the hard work of so many people at Austin P. So I appreciate your leadership and assistance during the time of the sunset performance audit. I know some of you had to be available to answer questions from the auditors. So thank you for your assistance during that time. I also want to thank General Bailey for his leadership and during his time at Austin P. As you may know, this will be General Bailey's last board meeting and I appreciate his support since I have served as interim president and also since he's been at Austin P. He really is a trusted friend and a colleague and we will certainly miss him. What you probably know is, as he shared, he's had many accomplishments during his time at Austin P such as helping our advancement team to launch that dynamic comprehensive campaign and helping us to assist with our long-range planning efforts, especially during the pandemic. But what you may not know is that he has been a mentor to so many of our students, particularly to the black males on our campus. You will often find him walking around campus, stopping random students, asking them how they're doing, checking in on their wellbeing. He has truly made a difference here. So I just want to say, General Bailey, that I will miss you. I know a number of us will miss you and the impact that you've made on this campus, but as I said before, once a governor, always a governor. We are not letting you go even though you will no longer be serving here at Austin P. So today I want to talk to you about the overall wellbeing of our students, of our faculty and of our staff that make up the Austin P family. Yesterday, Provost Cronley shared with the academic affairs committee what our fall enrollment looked like. But I wanted to really take it a step further and talk about those individual people who make up this university. And then I also want to share what the workforce in Montgomery County area looks like for our students who are graduating next week in the future. So what makes Austin P a family? It's the more than 1,600 employees and the more than 10,200 students representing Clarksville, representing the 46 states and representing 39 countries. We're also a diverse university. This fall, more than 40% of our students and more than 25% of our employees identify as non-white. And as you may recall, one in four of our students is military affiliated. Almost all of our undergraduate students receive some sort of financial aid, approximately 96.6%. And almost half of our students receive the Pell Grant, meaning they are low-income students. In addition, approximately 26% of our undergraduate students are non-traditional, which means they're the age of 25 years or older. We have the largest percentage of non-traditional students among all the other locally governed institutions. So I highlight that mix because in the challenge of COVID and when I'm bringing that back up, our student mix makes them uniquely vulnerable to challenging times like this. Many of our students are parents. They take advantage of our little GOV's Child Learning Center. Before the pandemic, 35 of our students' children were enrolled in that center. Our faculty and staff are also able to use that center and before the pandemic, nine of our faculty and staff have children enrolled. As with many areas on campus, the Child Learning Center had to reduce its capacity. So only 27 children were enrolled in the center this fall compared to 51 students, 51 children in the fall of last year. So this is just another example of how the pandemic has presented challenges for those raising young families during this time. The pandemic caused food insecurities for our students. So this fall, the APSU Foundation used a Tennessee Community Cares Program grant to offer free hot meals to students in need. This program called Feed a GOV provided eligible students and their families with meal vouchers to the university's dining venues and expanded opportunities for placing grocery orders through the university's food pantry. As part of that grant requirement, students completed a short survey on how COVID-19 had affected their financial situation. 1,279 students took that survey and a majority of them responded that they had either lost employment or had their employment hours reduced. These stories from those students are really gut-wrenching and difficult to read, but it really shows how much more it means that those same students persisted despite these circumstances. I would love to share with you the results of those surveys just so you can read what challenges that they're facing. It will really tug at your heart. Many of our faculty and staff have felt similar financial hardships from our students because they might have had, you know, while we were able to keep people employed here, their spouses might have lost jobs or lost hours. And so everybody is having a, you know, everyone's shouldering burdens during this time. So if you have ever wondered just how special our community is, wonder no more. The Austin P family is really incredible and resilient. Now, next week, we will celebrate the success of our 1,450 students through a virtual commencement ceremony. We had planned on holding in-person ceremonies up until Monday. I was convinced that we would be able to do this, but I got some advice from our state officials and in consultation with the university's senior leadership team and our COVID command team, we had to make really a difficult decision to have a virtual celebration. I'm really disappointed. My email suggests the students are disappointed. Social media also suggests that as well, but I believe that it's in the best interest of the health and safety of the students and also the staff. And if I can just go into a little bit more detail about that, a lot of our staff are in quarantine right now and so we are planning for commencement. We had about 26 vacant staff to staff that event and so we just simply could not pull it off. If it were not for that, I think we would have still proceeded, but we just logistically, it just wasn't able to work. So, but we are again having a virtual ceremony and I felt that it's important we will call every single graduate's name because they deserve that. And of course, they will have the opportunity to participate in a later commencement exercise if they so choose. As these students leave the university though, they're entering a strong economy. About a month ago, the FNS Group chose Clarksville as a place to build a 300,000 square foot warehouse and distribution center. That project will bring a capital investment of $33.4 million to the area and the creation of 62 new jobs. This is in addition to Clarksville being home to other large companies such as Honkuk Tire, LG Electronics, Bridgestone Med Alpha and Florum USA. The Industrial Development Board has purchased land for the new school complex to be built off Rossky Road, which means more teachers and more workers will be needed. And obviously, Austin P is right there ready to assist them in, you know, giving them more teachers that are qualified and competent and capable and to serve in those classrooms. And so we are continuing to explore ways that we can partner with industry to help meet workforce needs. Our Career Services Office surveyed students who have applied for graduation and are receiving bachelor's degrees to ask them what their plans are after graduation. So for the class of 2019, of the 73% of students who responded, 65% were actively engaged in employment opportunities. 16% were continuing their education, 13% were seeking employment after graduation and 3% were serving in the military. In addition, as indicated by payscale.com, the average salary for Tennesseans holding a bachelor's degree is $56,053. And of those students who reported having employment as their primary plan, 662 graduates fell into earning a starting average salary of $4,000, $40,000, sorry. In the survey, students are asked where they will be working after graduation and our students are receiving employment opportunities throughout the region, throughout the state and across the country. And I'm proud of how our faculty and staff are preparing our students for the workforce and that many of our students are able to enter into the workforce quickly after they graduate. Now, I'd like to share with you a few things that we have done to address the budget constraints that the university is facing due to our enrollment decline this fall. First, we made some strategic cuts in our operating expenses to the tune of 15%. But again, they were not salami cuts. Each vice president took their budget and looked at which areas could stand to takes more hits than others. And so I think that that was successful. We've also offered our faculty and staff a voluntary retirement incentive program. We had more than 50 faculty and staff apply for this. And so today, those who apply for the program will be notified of their acceptance. And then we're working on developing contingency plans and continuity plans for many of our departments who will see those vacancies occur. So the last day for the staff who have elected to retire will be March the 31st and for faculty, it will be May the 31st. Now, obviously, we will miss them. This is a lot of institutional knowledge that is walking out of the door, but we honor the work that they have done and appreciate their service to Austin P. We've also announced a voluntary furlough program for faculty and staff. So an employee may request a voluntary, several days of unpaid work or unpaid time off, basically. Not more than 45 calendar days per fiscal year with an employee's classification affecting how those furlough days can be taken. So I want to stop here and thank the Office of Human Resources who really helped us to craft these plans. And I share this with you because these are really important steps that we've taken to alleviate our budget constraints. Especially with the voluntary retirement incentive program, we may not necessarily see those savings right away, but over time, we are able to see those savings as we have. We will pause hiring for some of those positions and recruit those savings over time. And I also want to thank the Financial Planning Task Force for providing those recommendations to senior leadership team. And as Vice President Robin stated yesterday, senior leadership team talks about this every week. So we have an eye on making sure that we are continuing to have a balanced budget at the end of the year and are great stewards of the fiscal resources that we are provided with. Now, I wanted to also give you an update on the spring calendar now that we have shared the adjustments to the spring calendar with our campus community. We have restructured how spring break looks and are spreading the spring break over, splitting up the five days that would normally be taken and splitting them up through the course of the semester. So classes will not be held on February the 15th in the spring and then March 11th and 12th. We have two additional days that we are holding on to for urgent situations such as maybe the need to pause classes due to COVID-19. Now, if those additional two days are not used by a sort of a midpoint in the semester, then they will be added to the calendar and the campus will be notified of those days in advance. Now, we still plan to begin classes on January the 19th and instruction will mostly resemble the same model as it did this fall, except that we are adding about 25% more face-to-face classes in response to student demand. We have surveyed our students over time and a lot of them say they are struggling. So in response to that, we're adding more face-to-face classes. Now, I'm still meeting daily with our COVID command team and we are continuing to monitor the cases on campus and in the community. So if anything changes in the semester to come, then I will certainly let you all know. Now, for next fall, we are planning to bring classes to a more balanced level of face-to-face offerings that will resemble our pre-pandemic course offerings. But we will keep you apprised of that information as it comes. As it was mentioned yesterday, we will be a site for distribution for a vaccine and I think that that will help us to be able to bring more face-to-face offerings in the fall and maybe even in the summer. Provost Cronley shared information with you yesterday regarding our enrollment for the fall and some concerns about our enrollment and retention in the future. But I also want to let you know that we have our eye on those challenges. I convened a small working group comprised of myself, Provost Cronley, enrollment management and student success, PR and marketing, Dean Hebner is on that and Dr. Andrew Luna, who is our data guru. And so we've been making some important decisions to address those challenges. We implemented a new customer relations management software which provides us the technology to interface with applicants along the spectrum from when they first express interest to when they enroll. We also are increasing the number of names that we are purchasing so that we can really recruit them in the beginning of their sophomore year rather than waiting until their junior year. And I have a nephew right now who's a sophomore and he called me when he got his first piece of college recruitment mail. So it really does matter, that first impression. So we are doubling down on that. We're shifting to more program level and college level marketing to really go after those students who have specific interests. And we are mobilizing our recruiting efforts so that instead of asking students to come to Austin P, we are embedding in the local community and the local businesses to bring Austin P to them. So we've also made greater investments in scholarships and you may also heard that we have waived the requirement for ACT scores for both admissions and for scholarships. We believe that this will eliminate barriers for students and continue to encourage them to apply. So I believe that we are making the right investments and I'm excited about the way this will impact our ability to draw students in. Now, Vice President Robinson shared with the Business and Finance Committee yesterday information from TEX Fall Meeting. I'm excited about our Health Professions Building, that it moved up a place to second place on the Capital Projects List. And you also may have seen that the APSU Foundation received a $3 million gift from the Clarksville Montgomery County Community Health Foundation for the Health Professions Building. Yes, that was major. That funding will be used to support that building and to provide additional equipment that's needed for our students. I'm meeting right now with state legislators before the holiday break and we will talk about the Health Professions Building and actually encourage them to continue to advocate that it be included in the budget. I also anticipate that it will be included in that budget and hope that the general assembly will pass that budget in the spring. We're also seeking support again for our Institute for National Security and Military Studies. That Masters of Science and Criminal Justice that you approved today will be a major part of that institute. We're also on track to offer an additional degree in National Security Studies and for a bachelor's degree that will help to sort of stack those credentials. We're asking the general assembly for $750,000 for three years for a total of 2.25 million. This would be seed money to get that institute up and running. And then the goal is that the university will be able to take over the full cost after the first three years. This will be another topic for us when we talk to our legislators to continue to ask them to give us that funding. So if you are, as your friend, talking with our legislative delegation in contingency, please encourage them to continue to support that. I want to close by saying that our faculty, staff, students, alumni and friends are what make Austin P a family. It's really what makes us special, is how we were able to make it through the semester without having to transition a fully remote instruction. That is not anything to skip over. The fact that we were able to do that this semester successfully, I am extremely proud of. I am so proud of all of us and what we have accomplished these last several months. Before I close, let me say that we would normally host a holiday reception for our faculty, staff and retirees and one for our community. And we would also typically host a holiday dinner, which is a formal dinner and fundraising for our coral ensembles. However, in the spirit of marking this occasion because we cannot get together, we put together a virtual holiday extravaganza that was released this morning. It's a wonderful collaboration between Dr. Corey Foster and our music department. Professor Talon Beeson in theater and dance narrated it and it was produced by our Department of Communications with assistance also from our alumni relations. And so I hope that you will get that link and that you will tune in and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time. Let me also remind you that in your materials, there are some interim items such as the State Building Commission actions and contracts. And you will also be receiving a corrective action plan for some of those performance audits that were identified with the state and those will be mailed out to you on Monday. So let me stop here and take any questions.
Danelle, thank you very much. And I had a chance this morning to look at the link, watch the performance and a little teaser for everybody that might not have seen it. Danelle has a singing portion in the middle of it that's terrific. So it was very, very well done and I didn't know you were that good. So thanks for sending that out. Thank you for a terrific report. And thank you, Danelle, for your leadership during this unprecedented time. You know, while your title may be interim president, there's no such thing as interim leadership and you're providing that for the campus and for that, we are very appreciative. I'd like to open it up, I guess, for the rest of the group to ask any questions or make comments.
Mike, I might say one thing. I've known Ron Bailey a long time. And I'm glad we had him as a member of our faculty at Austin P. What a great guy and what an important person he's been to the faculty and staff there at Clarksville and in the community. And I just want to say one more time, thanks for being you, Ron. And you covered us with glory. So thank you. And I hope you, whatever you choose. And I hope you, whatever you choose or whatever you've chosen is is something that makes you happy. Next question I would have would be, I, I'm just impressed with Danell at coming in. I mean, what a, what a terrible scenario to begin your career and and then to do, do so well. So thanks, Danell, for that. And lastly, do we know really why our enrollment is down? Are we just a big hand over a small map? You know, we think we know. Do we really know? And are we looking to find out? Danell, I'm sure you, your team is doing that, but I wonder what, what, what you could tell us about what we really think has caused this downturn in enrollment?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The data does tell us some interesting things. I mentioned earlier our mix of students, which really make them particularly vulnerable to times like this. So COVID nineteen had an impact on that. But if you look at our last two years of of enrollment trends, we've been down for the last two years in new freshmen. And the growth that you saw when we hit that eleven thousand forty-eight students has really been dual enrollment. So we really haven't brought new full-paying bodies to the institution in in several years. So once you kind of peel back those layers, you start to see that we have to develop a strategic enrollment plan so that we figure out what's the best mix. Because we can't always hang our hat on dual enrollment students because they don't, they don't pay the full rate. So we've got to figure out what is the right mix of students that we need in order to make everything work and we're working on that.
Thanks, Danell.
Thanks, General Luck. Any, anyone else? Well, I too would like to say thanks and recognize General Bailey and his many contributions since he's come back to his alma mater. He will certainly be missed by all of us. And and we all appreciate very, very much what he and the rest of the senior management team, senior leadership team at the university has done in this past year. If there are no other comments or questions from my colleagues, let me remind all of us that our next regularly scheduled meeting will take place March eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I move that the meeting adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. The meeting adjourned. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays and everyone, please stay safe.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.